To order, we'll start with the opening session prayer by Mike Hayes, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Jarman Hicks.
Bless pray. Dear heavenly father, we just want to thank you for this day, Lord, and thank you for everything you've given us. Lord be with us tonight as we make the best decisions for our school system, our children, and our employees of this system, Father. Lord be with us as we go our separate ways and keep us all safe tonight. Lord be with those that are sick. Put your healing hand upon those, and you know who those are, Father. Lord be with our soldiers that protect this great country overseas and here in Shore, Father. For Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move into approval of the minutes of the December 11th, 2018 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Ricky Dodson, seconded by Jarman Hicks. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll move to additions or deletions to the proposed agenda. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the January 8th, 2019 meeting agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by Doffis Dahl, seconded by Mike Sullivan. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move right into the executive action items. Approved bid of $118,581.71 from Central Technologies for security cameras. This is not going to include A.H. Roberts. If I can get a motion on that?
Motion.
Motion by Howard Miller, seconded by Jarman Hicks. Any discussion?
I got a question. Will A.H. be included in the future?
Yes, sir, next year. This is, this will be covered by that grant, the safety grant, and of course, part of that is recurring for the next, well, it'll be four years after this one.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda items. First thing is a letter of resignation from Priscilla Morales. I'll let Dr. Whinneyham read that.
This letter is written for the purpose of giving notice of my resignation as a foreign language and ESL teacher due to health reasons. My resignation will be effective on December 20th. It was not easy to come to this conclusion. I feel like I have grown as an individual and as a teacher. I hope you understand that as of right now, this is the best decision for me. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your kindness and support. I feel that I am leaving with a remarkable amount of knowledge that I will take with me. I also want to thank you for the opportunity you've given me to be a part of this wonderful team. It was a blessing to have taught at this school. I will be bringing many fond memories of this experience, and I am hoping for good things to come. I'm hoping you take this resignation with a goodwill it was issued. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you need my help with making the transition as smooth as possible, not only for my replacement, but for the students as well. Thank you for your support and understanding. I wish this school all the best. Yours sincerely, Priscilla Morales.
Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and group the Allen's Elementary Boys and Girls Basketball to UT Basketball Game in Knoxville, Tennessee on 2/9/19. I'll get a motion for the consent agenda items. My Hayes, seconded by Doffis Dahl. And all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to our new business item, which is approved first reading of the following policy, 4.602 class ranking. Do I have a motion for that? Motion by Diane Sadler, seconded by Ricky Dodson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then we'll go for the special recognition of the OCEA.
There, I don't have much tonight. As I'm sure most of you are aware, today was the beginning of the 111th General Assembly. It began today. So, OCEA and TEA look forward to working with schools across Tennessee to fight on behalf of public schools. I think that we're going to have to mount up our armor this year and really stand up and defend some concepts. I think we're going to be under some challenge from some charter school and some vouchers and possibly some privatization issues that may come forward. So, I know this is one, one time that we're all on the same team. So, I look forward to watching that fight, as I'm sure y'all do too. Thank you.
Okay, and the last thing, the director's report.
I hired the following certified substitute teacher, as recommended by myself, James Kelly. Hired the following non-certified substitute teachers, Beth Troyer, Ashley Smith, Stephen Barlow, Pam Smith, Carla Gardner, Karen Walters, Bobby Gillentine, Hannah Johnson, Trista Farley, Denise Richmond, Mary Rourke, Donna Franklin, Mackenzie Purdue, Grace Weaver, and Jolene Johnson. And then, there were two things on fundraiser report, one from Allen's to sell Santa pictures at Christmas program to raise funds for supplies, technology, and resources for students, and one from Livingston Academy, the Interact Club sweatshirt sales to raise funds for club expenses.
Okay, and before I take motions to adjourn this meeting, Dr. Whinneyham has an announcement that he wants to make that's from one of our students that I feel that we should celebrate.
Yeah, every year, we have students who are enrolled in dual credit classes and either through Vol State or the Technology Center or through statewide dual credit. And the statewide dual credit has been a challenge for every student to pass that exam at the end. But we had one this year that passed the world history exam. It's a ninth grade student, Cole Wilson. And last year, no one in the state of Tennessee passed that exam. So, that's quite the accomplishment for that young man to pass that exam this year as a ninth grade student. So, that's something to celebrate, so.
Okay, I thought we should celebrate that. So, now, with that being said, we're going to go ahead and take a motion to adjourn the meeting by Mike Hayes, seconded by Jarman Hicks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we'll, y'all want to move right into the work session?
Sure.
Okay, well, we'll go right down to these seats here and move right into the work session. Guys, Howard Miller has been suggesting we sit up here so we can see the audience. Okay, so I'm going to call this work session to order. The first thing we have on there is the LA Education and Training Classes, Lyndon Hossel and Gary Ledbetter, if you all want to come up.
We just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your support and to let you know a little bit about the education and training career cluster at LA. It's one of the fastest growing career clusters that we have. I have with me some of the students today. I'd like for them to stand, okay? Aleisha Bilbry, Emily Matthews, and Shelby Mountain. What is happening to the, to our classes that Mr. Ledbetter and I are both really proud of is that we will have our first five completers of all four classes that they are supposed to take at the end of this semester. My fourth block, which is the beginning foundations class for this cluster, has a group of nineteen in that class. Tweeny is full, okay? So, the classes are set up to inspire future educators. So, take a look at these three girls. Guys, you will see them again, I can promise you. They're some of the best that, that I feel like LA has to offer. I'd like to ask the girls to tell the group what you plan on doing, what, what type of teaching are you looking for? Aleisha, we'll start with you. What would you like to teach?
I plan on teaching elementary education.
Elementary ed, okay. Emily?
Excuse me, can you have a little closer? I can't hear.
Okay.
I'll plan on doing elementary education, elementary special ed.
I'm thinking library.
The classes are set up again to inspire future educators. Now, something I'm also real proud of is to get to work, once again, with Mr. Ledbetter. He adds lots of wisdom and lots of experience to the class, lots of laughter, and that's what we're doing. These girls would probably argue that my expectations are a little high some days for them. We work hard, we laugh a lot, we get things done. So, thank you for your support. It's one of the, again, one of the career clusters that I really enjoy working with.
Let me say this. Long story short, Dr. Whinneyham and I have talked about this all last year, and then this year, we're basically, and I'm saying we, Overton County, in the upper Cumberland, state of Tennessee, southeastern United States, maybe the entire state, Dr. Zagumny could probably attest to this, we're basically at a teaching candidate, the potential, or crisis. And I talked about it. And Dr. Whinneyham said, I remember years ago, and you all probably do too, if you've been on the board as long as some of you all have, the teaching applications being a stack that big. And Dr. Whinneyham said, no longer. So, last year, I worked with, through the Highlands Initiative, with the Overton County students, Clay County, Jackson County students. And then, at the spring of last year, summer of last year, they redistributed those funds, and that was kind of moved to a different place. Well, this year, I was hired in Overton County as ELA coach. So, I'm working at the high school and with our junior high English, you know, the language departments. But I also find time, a little bit of time, to go down and work with these good people here. And let me just say it like this. I was at Richmond Elementary School last year, walking down the hall. A lady down the hall yelled at me and said, Mr. Ledbetter, could I talk to you? And I said, yeah, I stopped. And she came up and she said, I want to thank you. And I said, for what? And she said, you're one of the first ones that have encouraged, that has encouraged my daughter, who was a senior at Livingston Academy last year. Her daughter's now an education student at Tennessee Tech. She said, you're one of the first ones that's encouraged my daughter to be a teacher. She said, that's all she's ever wanted to do. That's all she's ever talked about. She said, but this comes from grandma, grandpa, aunts, uncles, and her dad saying, you don't need to do that. You need to do something else. And she said, finally, we've got through Ms. Hossel. And she said, I was working with, like I said, the Highlands Initiative last year in those three counties. She said, finally, someone's, someone is encouraging our students to go into education if that's what they want to do. So, Dr. Whinneyham, I, we talked quite a bit about it last year, and then we got involved in several things through the Highlands Initiative, just to try to mentor and to put the information out there that, and I call it the good, the bad, the ugly, that we don't paint a rosy picture for them, do we? We try to give them the truth, but to say it's one of the most rewarding jobs you could ever have, those educators will say that. But guess what? And as a, as an instructor, of course, I worked, like I said, with Dr. Zagumny at Tech. As an instructor at Tech, one year I had a, a young lady, she was going to be a sophomore that year. All she'd ever wanted to do was teach. And she, I was her advisor. And she was wanting to take my class for sophomore year. She came into my office and she said, could I talk to you? And she was crying. And I said, yes. And she said, I went home for the summer vacation, and my dad told me, she lived in the Nashville area. She said, my dad told me that if I didn't change my major, he would no longer pay for my, agree to pay for my college education. She was devastated. She said, that's all I've ever wanted to do is teach. And I said, well, we have some restrictions about going out and talking to parents. I said, but, you know, let me know if I can help. So, within a week or so, she came back all smiles into my office, and I said, what's, what's going on? And she said, I just finally told dad, that's all I've ever wanted to do. If you want to help me to fund my education, fine. If you don't, I'll do it some other way. And she said, dad, fine. I said, okay, if it means that much to y'all. So, I go back to say, give you those two examples to say, we've got students, and I have people in the public to say, now, tell me about this TAPS 1, 2, and 3 program at Livingston Academy and their FOED class. And I try to explain to them, it's basically just mentoring students who want to be teachers and giving them the information that they want to try to encourage as opposed to discourage.
And do some observations in, in local classrooms.
Right. We took three, maybe about three different trips last semester to our elementary schools. And I went to Clay County about three weeks ago. The lady that does the similar program there, she asked me to come up and speak to her class, and I did. And her daughter and four or five others that I've worked with last year in Clay County, they're now in, in the local colleges, beginning their educational program. But she said, I would love for you, this, this lady in Clay County, she said, you all need to let your board know how that you appreciate them and your superintendent, Dr. Whinneyham, for allowing this program to be in effect at Livingston Academy because the surrounding counties do not have that. They're trying to encourage, but they're running into the same obstacle that we have here in Overton County, which is fewer students are choosing the education path because they're being discouraged. So, and Dr. Whinneyham and I have talked, we're our own worst enemies a lot of times. You know, I don't, I can truthfully say, I don't think I've ever told one of them I wouldn't do that. But have I encouraged them like I should have? Probably not, until I got into this. So, I said, even as principal of Livingston Academy, I tried to encourage, but I don't know if I did enough to encourage our students who wanted to be teachers to make sure that they knew they had some mentors, someone who would back them, and a support system. And that's what you people are providing by providing the TAPS program at the high school. So, we just kind of wanted to come and introduce these ladies and say thank you. And for the general public, who do, you know, the general public does not know as a group, you know, what we're doing there, because they've said, now, tell me about this education program at the high school. Like I said, I'm the ELA coach, but I am finding some time to go down and work with these students. And these ladies and the other students are saying the same thing. They're saying, this is interesting. We want to do this. So, we thank you for allowing us to do this. And Dr. Whinneyham, thank you for your encouragement last year and this year. And we want to, we want to get out of the crisis stage if, if we're in one.
Not gonna show, these ladies here are some of the best.
We all have questions. We want to take your picture. Audience, again. So, if you over on that wall or here in front of us, wherever, take, they want to take your picture and put it in the paper. Okay?
I'd like to thank you all for showcasing the program and bringing these young ladies before us. I think we need to do more than that.
Yeah. And, uh, but I think if we don't, we're going to, we're going to lose some, some good talent to other things when we could have some teachers.
Okay, let's see. Can I get it? Okay, on three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Westwood, try it again.
One, two, three. There we go.
Thank you all for allowing us to, thank you all.
Okay, and the next thing we're going to move into is the impact, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Whinneyham to sort of give us some background and introduce our guests.
Well, we've, you know, as always, we're going to try and address the needs of our students, and those things are changing more now than they ever have probably in, in the past. And we reached out to a, this is a nonprofit group that has been working in Putnam County schools, and they'll give you more information, I'm sure, than, than I will. I don't want to steal any of their thunder, but they started 10 years ago. Is that correct? And so, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Quentin Cancel and Lisa Zagumny to share information with you guys. We met informally the other day with a few, and, and so, just come on and, and share your information and, and what you can share for our students at Overton County.
Thank you. I don't know where to stand. I guess I'll go over here, too.
Let's hear some worship.
Yes, well, thank you for inviting us, Dr. Whinneyham and Chair Abson. Thank you to the board. We met with some of them Friday briefly, and it was a good meeting. And so, we just feel an honor to come here and talk to you guys about the things that we're doing in Impact, the things that we're doing in the Putnam County school system, and see how we can be of service to you here in Overton County. I have a couple guests, as you mentioned, Dr. Lisa Zagumny, who is the dean of the School of Education at TTU. She's also on our Board of Directors as the Vice Chair of Education. And I have what we call a homegirl here, Dr. Karen Ramsey-Idom, who is from Overton County, who is an ambassador for Impact, and she leads out in our inclusion and unconscious bias workshop training. And so, she actually has a little time crunch here, so I'll kind of skip a little bit about, I'll abbreviate my remarks about Impact and just say that we are 10 years old this year, and our mantra is community building community. And we want to create environments where everyone thrives, all of our kids thrive, and they're culturally supported. If you look around Cookeville, upper Cumberland, it's changing. It's, it's growing by leaps and bounds. We have companies coming from all over the world coming in to, to our, our area. And we have to set the tone. We have to prepare for that. And so, we've been doing some work with the public school system in Putnam County to help create an environment that is welcoming, culturally supportive. And part of that is professional development with unconscious bias training. All of us have unconscious bias. You can't live in this country and not have some unconscious bias. And so, part of this is recognizing that and having some cultural sensitivity about that. And so, I'm going to kind of turn it over to Karen so she can say her part about that.
Thank you. So, thank you all. As, as Quentin did mention, I am a homegirl. You might remember my dad, Charles Castle Ramsey, and my mom, Joyce Ramsey. And I thank you all for, for letting me participate and come here today to talk about this very organization of Impact Purple and some of the work that we've been doing specifically around unconscious bias and trying to help individuals raise their awareness. If you have a brain, you have unconscious biases. And so, the point of going through this training and, and really understanding what's going on, you can't stop that initial gut reaction, but you can stop that second thought. You can change. And, you know, when you think about the way the brain works, there are neural pathways that each time you do the same thing, that neural pathway gets deeper. And so, if you can stop it, you can actually allow that neural pathway to heal up, and you won't do that action again. And so, we want people to feel like they belong and, and actually belong and be included and be able to not just survive going through school, but thrive as they're going through school and go on to be very successful. And so, the workshop, we conducted a workshop back in November and had about 45 members of the community, a really great, you know, cross-section of all that you see and love about the upper Cumberland area. And there was such great energy and passion about it that we want to, to really drive that forward. And so, we're going to be going for this year and doing Train the Trainer and having facilitators who are comfortable in going out and doing more of this in schools, in local organizations across the community, nonprofits, as well as businesses. And, and really trying, again, to make sure that our communities are welcoming and that anyone feels like this is home. That particular training was the morning of Tech's homecoming, just to say that. It was really bright and early, and we didn't have a whole lot of knowing and getting word out about it. And like Karen said, we had about 50 people there, and we had tech faculty and staff. We had folks from Putnam County schools. We had various community members. And the feedback was, we want more, we need more. Please let us know when you do, you know, because sometimes people don't want to give you their email address. They're like, where do I sign up to get more information about this? So, it was really well received. And so, we're going to, like Karen said, do the Train the Trainer and roll out some more. But I am a part of Impact, but I'm the dean of the College of Education at Tennessee Tech. I am all about some public schools and doing whatever we need to do to support our teachers and our staff and our administrators in our public schools. So, I'm here to serve you all and am happy, excited, thrilled to be able to share what we've been doing in Putnam County. You know, Putnam County gets a little spoiled because that's right where Tech sits. And while we try and reach out, you know, sometimes we get stuck. So, I think this is a great opportunity for us to roll out some of the things that we've been doing with Putnam County up here, but also to help meet your needs. It's not cookie cutter. It's not, okay, we're doing this here, so we're going to do it up here, too. We want to know what you need from us so that we can provide those resources and those supports. So, if that's, you know, curriculum support, supplemental materials, something like that, if it's professional development, if it's speakers, if we want to roll out some particular events that we can help, that's what we want to do. So, we're here to provide a resource to you all.
Yes, and, you know, part of this was, after having a conversation with Jerry Boyd, he was also on our board, the training for teachers just consisted mostly of poverty training, I think. And there was no diversity component to it. And we really do ourselves a disservice if we don't train our kids and our teachers to live in a diverse world because this is a global world, it's a global economy. And if you don't prepare these kids to, to interact with people that don't look like them, don't sound like them, don't have their same background, they're at a disadvantage. And so, it really helps us all if, if we can kind of get in front of this and, and be proactive in our, in our thinking about it, so.
I have just a couple of resources, just so y'all have something in your hand. Grab one and pass it down. The first thing on there, and these are not in a priority of importance, it's just the way the paperclip worked with the little piece. You have my business card on there. So, you have my contact information if you need to get ahold of me in addition to these two, because we're all part of the same team. The second piece of paper on there is a save the date card. There is a professional organization, the National Association for Multicultural Education. We happen to have a Tennessee chapter, and it's a really neat organization. And this summer, the Tennessee chapter is just, it's brand spanking new, they just organized. And we're having a conference at Tech in July. So, spread the word. If there are some folks that you think would be interested in coming to that, we can make that happen. The third sheet on there is the graphic for the pipeline to progress for Impact. And then, the last sheet.
Can I just say something about that real quick?
Please.
Pipeline to progress is our strategic vision for attracting, developing, and retaining diverse talent. You know, if we, if we have these talented kids here, we don't want them to go somewhere else and leave. We want them to contribute back to our community. If we have talent coming in from outside of the state, we want that here in our community. So, this is our strategic plan to be forward-thinking and to think of ways that we can set the tone, create the environment where people want to stay in this environment, contribute to our, our society.
And then, the last sheet is, there's another program through Impact Leadership with Cindy Schuman, and she has, it's like a five-pronged program where they talk about everything from financial literacy to diversity to Myers-Briggs. It's a whole package. So, she wants... It's a whole package. So, she wanted us to share what her program works on, and you have those five pieces broken out there. And she's happy to help and roll that program out up here, too, again, based on what your needs are for your schools.
I just wanna say I appreciate it. I mean, I'm excited to see what we can accomplish working together and to help our students and help our faculty and help our community. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, we've got two things that's not listed on here. The next thing, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Hayes to give an update on the Building Committee.
Yeah, so yesterday, the Building Committee met at the high school, and the first thing we did was looked at the football stadium that we've discussed in the past. Mr. Chaney was not able to be here. He had a kidney stone and unfortunately is in the hospital. But a couple of the architects and engineers did come up and took some notes for him. So, got some more details, kinda things we're looking for and layouts and things of that nature. I know Dr. Winningham's gonna get in touch with Mr. Chaney the end of the week, first of next week, for him to come back in a couple of weeks to sit down and meet with us. But after that, we went inside the library and just took school by school and went through our original list of things that we had for the Building Committee. Several things that was taken off the list due to, you know, projects getting done with this energy saving program, the ESSI that's underway right now. So, a lot of the bathroom remodels, all the schools are getting the new toilets that are water efficient, new sinks that are water efficient, all the LED lighting that's water efficient. If you haven't had a chance to high school, go look at that gym. It's just amazing. I think comments have already been made, hey, have you redone your floor? You know, nothing's been done. It's just the lighting has brought that much in there. So, that works underway and getting done, too. But our next step would be in a couple of weeks, when Mr. Chaney can meet back with us, is to sit down and go over some dollar figures with him on what he thinks that it would cost us to do that and kinda meet as a group and throw out some other dollar figures. Then at that point, start tackling a game plan on how we address some of these issues. So, pretty much it, just kinda recapping and, you know, narrowing the list down a little bit and a little bit more in-depth and going from there. So, hopefully in a couple, three weeks, we can get back together with Mr. Chaney and have some more information, so. I actually spoke with him this afternoon. Oh, did you? Yeah, he was, he was excited to talk to someone else, I think. I'm sure. He was feeling much better. He's ready to go home. He didn't know if he was gonna get to or not. But we discussed those things, and I hope that the two gentlemen that came had the list of information. He's gonna start working on that at the moment, so. If he gets to go home. Then I'll just get back with you first of next week so we can get a date with him.
Okay, and the last thing is, we have a Budget Committee meeting immediately following this meeting, correct, Jarman?
Yes, it'll just be real quick, just ten minutes of the committee and Dr. Winningham and if our Budget Director wishes to attend, we'll come, so.
Okay, with that being said, I guess I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this work, adjourn this work session. And thank you all for coming, and you all have a safe trip home.